The May 18th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The Board is meeting via Zoom. All of the information about our meeting has been posted on our agenda as well as dial-in information for those people who aren't able to join via Zoom. The recording of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document. So let's get moving. First item is discussion regarding town meeting and recommendations. But actually, let's run around the horn and have everybody who's on the call identify themselves. All right, I'm Christine Joy.
John Trainor.
Marilyn Brown.
Robert Gomez.
Mark Russo.
Catherine Shepard.
Liz Dennehy.
Sorry, I was muted. Nate Sides.
John Wilkinson.
Linda Letty.
Hi Linda.
Hi.
Truja.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Okay, all right, so Liz or Nate, do you want to take the lead on this?
Nate, do you want to start with the budget?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. I believe the members of the Board of Selectmen all received a copy of the budget document that we would be discussing this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, great.
I had a problem running printing it out, but that's my problem.
Okay. I mean, I can attempt to share it if you would like me to do that, but otherwise, we can just go along and discuss it. So after our meeting last week, FinCom met again and with the guidance from this board, tried to come back to you this evening with revision to the budget to get us to a place where we would have an overall increase of somewhere in the vicinity of 1.6%, which, if you recall, was the cost of living adjusted, the adjustment that was decided upon by the federal government. So with the help of the accountant and administrator in the various boards and departments, we were able to do that. Ultimately, we were successful because of the fact that, as you heard, Silver Lake Regional School District made pretty substantial cuts to their budget. And we anticipate that some of that will certainly trickle down to us. So I gotta talk fast because the reporters signing in, so I better get this out of the way. Anyway, so at this point, the FinCom has not officially voted their recommendations for you. We were all in agreement for what we had developed. We've since revised the school numbers a little bit. So with your permission, or I guess I'll ask if this is how you would like to proceed, we'll proceed down the budget the way we typically do. And we can go on section by section or line by line, whatever the Board's preference is. And I can offer explanation if there are any questions.
That sounds good.
Okay. So if you all have the document in front of you. Let me get my own document up here. And you know what, for the benefit of the others on the call, maybe I will try to share this.
That would be really nice. That would be helpful.
Bear with me. That's the one. Okay, did that work? Can everyone see this?
Not yet.
Not yet, but it looks like it's doing.
Thinking about it, okay.
Yep. There we go.
Great.
Excellent. Okay, so what we have here is the the budget document that FinCom uses and throughout our discussions over the course of the year as we're preparing the budget for the town meeting. This also is ultimately what gets printed out in the town warrant and circulated to the townspeople. But you'll see that there are different columns representing the last couple of years of fiscal years, budget and actual expenses. And the column that is in yellow is the request that came in from the various departments. That was their original request for fiscal 21. And then the green column over towards the right side is what we are presenting as our recommendation for the town meeting for this year. So the first section, the insurance and pension section, the original request came in at $1.455 million. We were able to get it down to $1.243 million, largely looking at actual expenses over the past couple of years for the group health and revising what that projection was. The pension number that you see there in front of you, even though it's a 10% increase, is the actual number that we will be charged. And there is a projected large increase in the group health premiums, but we're pretty confident in the fact of the $480,000 that we're recommending, that that will more than cover our town's liabilities as far as that goes. Any questions on the first section?
No.
Moving along to the general government section. Originally, it had come in at a total budget of $87,000 and change for a 16% increase. We have largely level funded it to the point of a $75,768. Trying to see if anything jumps out at me that was item that we had discussion about. Probably the one that might jump out at you is an 800% increase for the planning board. That is to provide them with some administrative assistant help for this coming year. Those hours, it was budgeted at four hours a week. And you'll see that as a reduction further down. We took the, we reallocated the hours from a different department, but you will see that $4,000 disappear later on.
Nate, this is a net, but I know you've zero, you've level funded every expense item, I think, throughout. So my question is, you know, the finance committee, it's $200, but why wouldn't you do the same there? And again, it's a net.
Sure. The reason for that is because we, our postage, the only expenses we have are postage to send the warrants out. So if you want us to make it 1,800, we can do that and then we'll write our own override. If it makes you feel better, John, I'll be more than happy to do that. Any questions on the general government? Next section, the assessors. They had originally come in at $89,000. Our recommendation is for $82,292. Again, roughly level funded. Their expense line, you'll notice, is at a negative number. The reason for that is if you, their warrant article that they're going to upgrade their software. As a result of that software upgrade, there is going to be, there will not be a need for continuing a contract to support the outdated software that they're replacing. So that allowed us to reduce their expense line. So that's how we got to a negative number there. The salaries are all at the 1.6% increase that we discussed last week.
Do you have, do you feel comfortable that doing this replacement makes sense this year?
I do. You know, we did, we went back and forth on it a couple of times. We did ask some questions of the assessors. We were confident in their responses that both the combination of the fact that their current software platform's not going to be supported any longer after December. And they assured us it would enable them to have improved accuracy in their assessments. And again, there is a fourth, they told us there'd be a $4,000 annual savings. So it's, it'll pay for itself pretty quickly.
Yeah, thank you.
Town clerk section. Originally came in at approximately $109,000. We are now down at approximately $93,000. It's a more than a 1.6% increase, but that's largely due to the added expenses that we will have this year with the different elections that are upcoming. Again, salaries were held to the 1.6%. The difference on the town clerk support staff is that person is capped because they're a retiree. So their number of hours worked is capped. So that $22,186 is the actual amount that that salary will be. Any questions about town clerk?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the accountants, tax collector treasurer section. Again, the original request was around $193,000. We are recommending $186,249, which is a 1.1% increase. Pretty straightforward, I think. Support staff is a little bit larger than the 1.6%. The reason for that is we were told by the, both the accountant and treasurer that the the needs of the department warranted them bringing this person in last year at a higher rate than was previously being paid for that position. So to compensate for that budget overrun, they have reduced their expense line to compensate for the extra salary. Any questions? Moving on, the selectmen section is, you can see it's level funded this year. There are some individual lines that have changed up or down, but overall level funding for selectmen. Any questions? I assume you pretty much know this part.
The only issue may be the computer maintenance, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Board of Health section. Again, level funded for, on the expense side, the support staff. We went back and forth with the Board. There was some added money in there for health agents and such. Comfortable reducing even with the COVID, understanding that we will, we may have to go back to the reserve fund to help them out here. And again, the support staff within the department itself, we used the actual budget number to help calculate that $3,005. So we took, we took a combination of actual expenses for this support staff line over the last couple of years and tried to project a little extra for COVID. And then we used the actual projected number for the admin. Highway Department, Public Works Department. You will see that a couple of lines are highlighted in yellow off to the left as the descriptions. The reason for that, the first line, Public Works Admin Assistant, that $13,000 and change originally, or has been carried by, in the transfer station staff line. So as we have done over the last several years, we've tried to break out salary into its own budget line category so that we can track it better and have a better accounting of it. So that's, that's the reason that line is highlighted. And that's ultimately why that bottom line, their transfer station staff, looks like they took quite a hit, but in reality, we just transferred, you know, almost $14,000 out of that category this year. So that's, it's still there. It's just been, it's split into two lines now instead of just the one. And the Parks Department grounds maintenance line was just renamed to better describe the purpose of that line. So that's, that's the reason that one is highlighted. As far as everything else goes, I think it's fairly straightforward. Actuals were used, projections for the labor lines. Parks Department? I'm sorry?
Well, Nate, I was just wondering, so that line item drops more than in half? The Parks Department and grounds maintenance? Are they expecting to do less work or is the work being done through other line items?
Both, actually, John.
We're gonna have the highway department people take over some of that because they're expected to be a little slower this year in terms of the paving. Kind of reassigning some people, but also keeping the part timers that are on the staff still going for the grounds maintenance. But it's a little bit of a reassignment of duties.
Yeah, so not, not, not a less work, but different people doing it.
Correct.
Yes. Yep. Thank you, Liz. Transfer station, originally, they had requested $133,000 and change. We had knocked that down a little bit. Honestly, it's something of a guess. I mean, we know that the handling fees and the disposal fees and the recycling fees are all projected to go up pretty substantially. It's a best guess projection to put them at a 14% increase to try and take into account perhaps operating for a few months at a reduced schedule over there. You know, it's, it's our best guess, honestly. Overall, the Public Works budget is relatively level funded, as you can see. Personal, protecting a personal property. We reduced some of the, a couple of the expense lines based on past history. Nothing more. Everything else is either level funded or the 1.6 for the salary line. But the other two, the tree warden expense and the animal control expense, we took a look at historical data for what they actually spent and felt pretty comfortable reducing those down. Building inspector, building department lines. This is the line where you'll see the administrative assistant salary line was reduced again by that approximately $4,000 that was diverted up to the planning board. So you'll see that's why there's a 12% decrease there. It's already been, it was agreed upon by the employee. So it's not a surprise. Everything else is level funded. Fire department. Went back and forth several times with them as, you know, as usual. Their original request came in at $747,000. We are recommending $696,000. The major change is on the salary line from what was proposed at $523. We are recommending $493. So that $30,000 difference is, again, it's a 1.6% increase over what they have for fiscal 20 budget. We are counting on the fact that they are in a better staffing place now than they have been in the past. So there will be less of a need for overtime and that sort of thing. That's, that's the reason we are at the 1.6% on the salary line. Equipment and repair line, we did increase by $5,000. I believe we talked about this last week because they've had, they've had some catch-up work that they've had to do because of past maintenance that's been put off. So we did allow an additional $5,000 this year over, over last year. Any questions on fire?
No.
Okay, police department. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. They had originally requested an additional officer. That's what, how they got to that $805,000 request. You know, we, well, we initially would have liked to have been able to support that. Given the current scenario, we can't. So we, we have reduced their salary line to $750,000, which is about 3% up from where they currently are. Everything else is, as described, 1.6% increase. In the utilities, originally, we had budgeted $24,000 as kind of a best guess for the new building. Their actuals year-to-date and what they're projected to spend this year is substantially less. So we, we reduced it down to $20,000 going forward. Any questions on police? Emergency dispatch, I know we're all very familiar with. And we've all, you know, agreed to that number for a while now. So I don't think we really need to review that. Veterans benefits are all level funded with the exception of the agent who is getting the 1.6% increase. Library, same scenario. The supports, the staff is all at the 1.6% cost of living. The expenses are level funded. School costs. Again, we have gone back and forth a couple of times on schools. And there are, there are some areas that we would like to be able to support, but we also felt that it was important to treat all town departments equally, given the uncertainty that we're facing. So we, we came in at a 1 point, well, it's 1.5% due to rounding, but we came in at the same overall reduction for the schools. I'll point out that, oops, sorry, hit the button there. This is, has not been run by the, I mean, I did, I did email John this afternoon, but I, you know, I'm sure he has not had a chance to have a discussion with the, with the rest of the school committee yet. What we did, how we arrived at these numbers, we took the school costs, which is primarily staffing, added the 1.6% cost of living. We took the special education line, added the 1.6% there. And then we also added in the $15,000 that they are not requesting for the voc ed line. We credited that, if you will, towards the special education to try and make up for as much of that shortfall as we could. And that's how we arrived at that bottom line number.
Or just a thought, just a little bit of information on that. So is that, is that all right, Christine?
Oh, sure. Go ahead, John.
So, you know, we're, we're looking to look at the budget and we have meetings, you know, this week with the Teachers Association and other units in order to make sure that we can follow the same path as the town has. I think the, the challenge is going to be that we'll likely have to make some pretty tough decisions with respect to keeping to 1.6. And if you recall, one of, one of the items that we had requested this year was to add a position in special ed in order to deal with existing students at the Denny. To lay the groundwork for students that we believe will be coming into the Denny in order to prevent any of these students from having to seek services outside of the Denny. Because from a cost perspective, we have one student go out. Even to, you know, within like a collaborative placement, we will be at the cost of the position. If we have two, it will be a double and so on. So we're going to need to assess in order to keep to a 1.6%. We're going to need to have to take a look hard at the budget. We can find probably a few spots where we might be able to make it up, but not likely in its entirety. So either we don't hire that position and we risk unexpected expenses. And the other piece to that is that we are running a very, we run, we run a very lean budget anyways. If you recall, in some years past, we've had $120,000 come back, you know, out of the voc or special ed lines. This year, we have 40 coming back because we've been working with, you know, FinCom to get that number down in order to just keep it tighter. But the issue, of course, will be is that if we have a very, very tight budget this year, that any unexpected costs are going to come back and we're not going to be able to fund them out of other lines of the budget at special town meeting. So, you know, we'll have to look at whether we take the chance this year. Of course, we're going to be coming back into school, hopefully, with probably not less issues from the students after events. And for whatever school looks like when we get to the fall, probably more. And then we'll have to look at some of the other classes too. And just try and make sure that we can do the best we can for the students with the money that we have to, to, to use, to work with. The other thing I would just note just from a school perspective is we have no idea at this point what going back to school is going to look like. And so there is nothing in the budget to address any of those costs. Now, hopefully, those could be funded out of other funding sources. And I did ask the administration today to pull together any potential costs that were incurred by the Denny. I don't think there's much, but to pull that together so that we can pass that on to Liz for any reimbursement funding that might be out of the CARES Act funding that the, that the county has. So all that said, I'm not quite sure what we're going to do with this yet, but we're going to work on it and see where we can get to.
Thank you, John.
Hey, Nate, could we go back to emergency dispatch for a second? We, we have that listed as $103,000. I thought that was going to be $125,000.
It's, it's $100,000 and then the $3,000 is for the, it's like a dedicated fiber line that's going from the Rock directly to the police station.
Yeah, but I thought the number wasn't $100,000, but $125 for the new fiscal year.
No, it's now, it's $100,000.
Okay.
For the first year. We just signed, and actually, I'm pulling it up here. I'm trying to do the split screen.
Well, in that case, the negotiation went even better than we thought.
Yes, nice job.
I'm just looking here for the agreement. You can go on. I just wanted to pull up.
All right. Sorry to slow it down. I just wanted to make sure we get that right.
No, that's fine.
No, no problem. So.
So it's, it's, I'm sorry, I have it right here. So in the part of the agreement that actually Christine and I just signed today, it's $100,000 that's due right after July 1st. And then the additional, so the, yes, Mark, to answer your question, the negotiation went even better than, than you thought. So it's $100,000 and then the $3,000 is due to the dedicated fiber line that the Rock ran from there to the police station. And that fiber line, just for clarification purposes, has nothing to do with the town's fiber project that we're doing. That's like a separate line.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I think we are at the regional school section. And as, as you all heard, Silver Lakes School Committee made some difficult choices and, and cut about a million dollars from their budget, which we have not seen yet what that effect will be on our assessment. We theoretically should see $136,000 of that. If it's, if it's a million dollars, you know, our percentage, based on what our overall assessment is, would be $136,000. However, we didn't feel comfortable reducing our budget by that full 136. So we, we did knock it down by $100,000, which leaves us a little bit of a cushion on the assumption that something will happen. And, and, you know, we won't, we won't see the full credit for that, our portion of the assessment. So that's why the difference is from the original request of 2.327 down to 2.227 million dollars for the regional schools.
Can I make a quick comment there?
Sure.
They did not, they did not make a million dollars in cuts. They identified potential cuts, including a million dollars. So that's, there's a big difference there. They do not have a revised budget yet. They haven't decided which of those identified areas for cutting will be recommended or implemented. My guess is it will be substantially less than the million, probably somewhere in the middle is what my guess is. They may also have some other ways to get to those reductions that don't involve the identified cuts, if they can get some concessions. But I, I would like, they did not cut the budget by a million dollars. They just, they had to, they had to identify the cuts, particularly those that could impact employees. And they had to provide those by Friday. So that's why they did identification. And most likely, as the process goes on, and Silver Lake will meet to do their budget over the next few weeks, they will come up with a new budget. And then, you know, we'll be able to recall some of the folks that they had identified. So they have not had those discussions yet. That would have been more than two meetings.
Great. Thank you, John. That's very, very helpful. So, so then I guess for our purposes, do we want to keep our original assessment number in there of 2.327, recognizing that we may be able to modify at, at town meeting? Or do we want to do something different?
John, what's your sense on the cuts? My sense is it's going to be at least $500,000 in cuts.
I mean, I, I think it, it probably makes sense to have a reduction in there, but perhaps be a little more conservative. And then, I mean, I think for both school budgets, we will be amending on the floor, you know, to get the exact numbers in because we're, they're not done.
Okay, how about if we reduce our assessment by 50,000 instead of 100?
I think it's getting closer and then, you know, it will, it will hopefully come down on the floor.
That sounds good.
That sounds reasonable to take the middle of the road. We can adjust it on the floor.
Okay. Everyone on the FinCom, okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Hey.
Awesome. Thank you. So then that, 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 that's the end of the budget. So you will notice that the reserve fund, we did increase fairly substantially in recognition of the fact that we were asking all departments to be lean this year with the budget. And also obviously, the great unknowns that we are going to experience going forward. We felt it was prudent to set aside a little bit more money this year for the reserve fund. So typically, we, we put aside three quarters of a percentage point of the total budget. As the reserve fund, we increased it this year to approximately 1% of the total budget, just to give ourselves a little bit more cushion. Just, we just felt it was the right thing to do, given all the unknowns that we have for this, this current budget process. So bottom line, we, we were originally presented with requests totaling 11,992,000. And we are recommending to you today budget numbers of 11,412,323, which is a 1.2% increase overall.
Where is that?
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Where is that number? I see the total, but it's not the same number you're just.
Well, I just, I just added 50,000 back in on the school. So that maybe that's, that'll be different from what you received this afternoon. So it's right here where I'm.
I see it.
Okay.
Hi again, this is Linda. I'm not on Zoom, you know, I'm just on the phone. I was just listening on the conservation budget, especially with our new agent and everything. Are you yet to come to that or is that in there somewhere?
We, we went through.
It was under the general government, Linda.
Oh, okay. So it's, it's covered then?
The agent is in there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on any particular line or section?
Looks good, Nate.
Okay, so I think we first need to take a vote of the FinCom to approve the number as presented here. And I believe everyone is on now. So I'll entertain a motion of the FinCom member. Anyone? I think that was Steve made the motion, Mike seconded.
Yep.
We're recommending the budget as presented here this evening with a total number of 11,412,323. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Christine, all you.
All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote the, the budget is submitted. 11,412,323, which represents a 1.2% increase from the, the previous year.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we're all in favor.
Hey, this is Mark. Just kudos to the Finance Committee and Liz. You guys seem to have found a way to work together. And having been on the Finance Committee a million years ago, I know that this is years' worth of work here. And we're certainly really appreciative.
Thank you.
With a lot of last minute.
Absolutely.
Too, being that the COVID really changed everything after we'd already started the, the budget process. So yeah, nice job.
Nate, were you intending to go through the revenue side of this?
We can, sure.
If you were, I didn't know.
I'm not certain the numbers are, are updated to, to date, John. That's, that's my only concern. But I, I think Barbara's, she can probably speak to it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I went through this with Liz. The, the, obviously, the comfort level is going to be around what the federal government and state do. I think the budget as presented is very well done. I think you've obviously spent a lot of work on it. We'll keep our fingers crossed that the revenue works out.
Yeah, I think it's, it's certainly a little bit of a crapshoot, no doubt about it.
So do you want to go through now? Because I'll have to go through the warrant after the fact and update all of both boards' recommendations. So could we go article by article now? Like maybe starting with the annual and then do the special to vote all those? Does that work?
John, are you all set with the budget portion that we need to discuss?
Which John are we talking to?
John Trainer, budget and revenue, you're all set? You, you're okay?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, let's move on to the warrant then, if nobody else has any questions.
Okay. Do you want me to go through it or does somebody else want to go through it?
Why don't you, Nate, Liz?
You're probably the most familiar with it.
Okay, sorry, I can't tell like if I'm looking at the camera. I have to go to the split screen to bring it up. So, okay, so article, let's see, so we already did that. All right, so Article III is for the, let's see, all right, let me back up. Article II is to authorize the treasurer to enter into the compensating balance agreements for fiscal 2021. And this one only has typically required a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion that the, the board recommend Article II.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Article III is the updated wage and personnel classification chart. And this one has typically only required a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
All right, any questions or comments from the Board of Selectmen?
No, I understand that the Wage and Personnel Committee has done a lot of work on this and this has been okay by them.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that the Selectmen recommend Article III.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Liz, you're going to put in there the Wage and Personnel Board vote as well?
It was never included in there before because it's sponsored by them. So they had to vote on it. That was never printed in the warrant.
It's not a bad idea though, because in the past, we have had split votes.
They only have two members.
Really?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it would be a two zero.
Okay.
Well, they'll present the article too. It's there.
They're going to present the article as well, so. Article IV, both boards already voted on, that's the budget. Article V is to, for the sum of $33,000 for financial audits for fiscal 21, sponsored by the Town Treasurer. And that requires a vote of both FinCom and BOS.
Nate, do you want to go first?
Well, I, FinCom has already voted on the articles.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we, we, we reached agreement at our last meeting on these, so.
Okay, so I'll just check with you on each one and just make sure that it was a five zero.
Okay.
Nate?
All right.
Yes.
I thought we agreed, but we didn't vote.
Okay, well, then it wouldn't hurt to vote again then. All right.
Okay, so Article V is the 33,000 for financial audits for fiscal 21 submitted by the Town Treasurer.
Okay, for the Finance Committee, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Article V as presented for 33,000.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Aye.
All right. For the Board of Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article V as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, Article VI is for the Chapter 90, just to authorize the Highway Department to utilize those funds, what the state gives to us. And this one customarily, it looks like it's been a Board of Selectmen vote only.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article VI as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Article VII is to, is an appropriate or transfer the sum of $200,000 for road construction and resurfacing submitted by the Highway Department. And this requires a recommendation from both boards.
Can, and these are large ones, can we just, the, it's coming out of what, the capital account or the?
This one's coming out of capital, yes.
That'll be.
Capital stabilization.
And we have a meeting that we're trying to set up, I think, for next week. It'll end up being to go over motions and the funding sources.
Okay, the only one I'd like to do is if there's a reason appropriate in this, could you call it out?
There is none in any of the, John, this is Barbara. The way we've done it is there is none in any of the articles, either in this or in the special. They're all either capital stabilization, free cash, or overlay reserve.
Thank you.
Right, the wording, the wording of the articles though, until we do the motions that identifies the funding sources, the wording for the warrant says to raise inappropriate or transfer from other.
Right, right.
So this is for the 200,000 for the road work from both committees.
Okay, so for FinCom, I will make a motion to approve Article VII as presented for $200,000. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the article says 250,000.
No, you must be looking at an old version.
I must be, sorry. That must be last year. Are we on 2020?
That's why 21, Mark.
You're in the right year.
So sorry.
All right, for the board, I'll make a motion to recommend Article VII as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Liz, I would like him to be the Highway Department, Rob, to be prepared to discuss where he's going to be doing work.
I think that's a smart idea. I'll make sure that he's involved.
Okay, thank you.
Explain. Okay, for Article VIII, this is for $17,730.30 to make the annual lease payment on the Highway Department's Ford F-550 truck. And this requires both boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to approve Article VIII as presented for $17,701.
Second.
Mike, you gotta be faster. Sorry, bud.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, for the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article VIII as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Excuse me, one moment, this is Prashat. Who did your second for the FinCom?
Steve Lewis.
Okay, this is one of.
We're going to try to keep it the same way after all of them, just makes it a lot easier.
For the minutes, yes, absolutely.
I was going to let Mike have the next one.
Good suggestion.
So the next one is Article IX for $30,000 for a flail mower for the Highway Department. And that requires both boards.
For FinCom, make a motion to approve Article IX as presented for $30,000. All's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
What's a flail mower?
It's the mower that has like the little arm thing that can increase height. So it can mow like brush line and everything.
Gotcha.
Along the roadside.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one that had to ask that question.
It doesn't cut the vegetation, it beats it into the mid.
Perfect. All right, so for the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article IX as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Article 10 is standard CPC article. And it talks about creating from 21 estimated revenues for administrative expenses, $5,000. And then reserves, these are all fiscal 21 estimated revenues from historic resources, $10,000. Revenues for community housing reserve, $10,000. Revenues for open space reserve, $10,000. And revenues for budgeted reserve, $65,000. And this requires both boards.
Mark, these are all in line with the state mandated requirements?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So for FinCom, I'll make a motion to approve Article 10 as presented. All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 10 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Article 11 is for $2,500 for the fiscal 21 interim year real property valuation submitted investors, and this requires both boards.
For FinCom, I'll make a motion to approve Article 11 for $2,500.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Unanimous.
For the Board of Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 11 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 12 is for $2,500 submitted by the Board of Assessors for the Fiscal 22, quinquennial real property reevaluation, and yes, I Googled quinquennial. The word that was.
Made up word.
It's not a made up word, I thought it might be. Microsoft Word did not like it, it recognized it as an error. So this requires both Boards.
For FINCOM, I'll make a motion to approve Article 12 for the quinquennial real property evaluation in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Liz, what does quinquennial mean?
It has to do, it was like a big, kind of a convoluted explanation.
Every five years, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's like, it was worded differently than the, I don't know.
Okay.
Wanted to make sure that it was like a real thing.
Right.
Verified with Wendy. And, well, I wasn't certain if they meant it to read that way, because it talks about Fiscal 22.
Right.
But she said yes, so.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion, the Selectmen recommend Article 12 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, even though John was slow to vote.
Sorry, bud.
Article 13 is for $20,000 for the Assessors Office to purchase, install, and update their HAMA software, which is that switch over for the different appraisal software, and it requires both Boards.
Liz, I thought we received an update from Wendy that they only needed $10,000 for this now.
Correct.
If she sent that to you, it didn't come to me, but I can make that adjustment now.
Okay, Barbara, I have that correct, right?
Yes, I heard the same thing, Nate, we discussed it the last time, is $10,000.
Okay, so I wasn't on the last one, I was on the Selectmen's call, so that makes sense. I'll adjust that then to $10,000.
Okay, I'm pretty sure there was an email that she sent around, and. So.
Yeah.
In that case, I'll make a recommendation that, for the Finance Committee, that we approve Article 13 in the amount of $10,000 for the new software.
Second.
All those favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
All right, for the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we approve, recommend Article 13 in the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing an update of the computer-assisted mass appraisal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 14 is for the Police Department to lease and purchase 10 portable radios and the supporting equipment in the amount of $6,950 for the first payment on said equipment, and this requires both Boards.
So for FINCOM, I will make a motion to recommend Article number 14 in the amount of $6,950.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion, we recommend Article 14 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John?
I said I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, unanimous, you're so quiet.
Trying to control myself.
It is exciting.
Article 15 is a joint article, me through the Board of Selectmen, the Fire Department and Police Department, and this is to continue to build out our fiber optic network, manage the phone system upgrades that are required, and the technology upgrades, and this is for the amount of $22,000, and it would also be authorizing the Selectmen to enter into a lease or purchase agreement for some of this equipment for a period of four years, and this requires both Boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 15 in the amount of $22,000.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion, we recommend Article 15 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 16 is submitted by the Fire Department, and this is to transfer from the ambulance fund the sum of $340,000 to purchase and equip an ambulance, and to authorize the Fire Chief to take any actions relative thereto, and this would require both Boards.
I was just aghast at the sum for this. I guess I'm old and I remember $100,000 ambulance, but I guess you guys have vetted this and you feel comfortable with it.
We asked the Chief what his thoughts were on this, and he said that similar type 1 ambulances that have been purchased recently by neighboring towns have come in at around 325 to 335, so that's how we got at this number, and I'm not about to comment on whether you're old or not, John, I'm sorry.
The space speaks for itself.
John, the town did, the town did purchase one in 2014, and that one we paid $255,000 for.
I guess I totally forgot that, Barbara, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
How we cope, John, we forget big numbers like that. George, talk with a box.
I just concentrate on the small $200 ones.
John, can Christian put something together for us? I mean, what's up with that? He can probably do it for less than $340. So for FINCOM, I will make a recommendation or make motion to recommend Article 16 in the amount of $340,000 to purchase a new ambulance.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Board of Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 16 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 17 is for the Fire Department, $48,903.05 to pay the annual lease payments for the Fire Department vehicles that were already under previously authorized lease programs. Requires both Boards.
For FINCOM, I'll make a motion to approve Article 17 in the amount of $48,904.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 17 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 18 is for $10,000 for the Fire Department to purchase new personal protective equipment, and this requires both Boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 18 as presented in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 18 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Article 19 is for $16,724.23 to pay the annual lease payment for the Fire Department's command vehicle, and this requires both Boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 19 as presented in the amount of $16,720, whatever it was, 725.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion, we recommend Article 19 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 20 is for $12,000 to provide the required 5% match for a FEMA AFG grant to purchase and equip a new truck to replace Brush Truck 183, and the article does have the caveat that it's only if the grant application is successful, and this requires both Boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 20 to, in the amount of $12,000 for a new brush breaker grant.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 20 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, 21 is for $8,000 to purchase, repair, and/or replace self-contained breathing apparatus for the Fire Department, and this requires both Boards.
For Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 21 as presented for $8,000.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 21 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 22 is for $14,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School, and this requires both Boards.
We know what happened with Halifax.
Last year, they did not support the article and did not fund it. They haven't had a town meeting yet for this one, and I don't know when they're planning to do that.
Okay, according to the article in the paper, though, they are not going to support it again this year for what it's worth. For the Finance Committee, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 22 in the amount of $14,000 for a middle school resource officer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to oppose it, so it'll be a 4 to 1 vote.
Okay.
All right, Article 22, I'll make a motion, the Selectmen recommend as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, unanimous.
Okay, Article 23 is for $100,000 to replace the roof and insulation at the Highway Department building, and this requires both Boards.
And again, are we sure that the amount is reasonable?
We are, the first estimate that we received was $50,000, and I thought that that seemed light, so I had Rob get some other quotes, and it seems like the $100,000 will cover it. Again, though, these are simply quotes, it's not like going out formally for bid, which we would need to do with specifications and everything, so the amount could change a little bit, but it seemed like the $100,000 would get us there.
Okay.
And just as a point of information, this $100,000 is targeted to come out of the General Stabilization Fund that Barbara referenced earlier.
Okay.
So for Finance Committee, I will make a motion to recommend Article 23 for Highway Barn Roof in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 23 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, so Articles, I guess we'll take them one at a time and continue. So Articles, all right, we're not at the solar yet, never mind, I'm trying to do too many things at once with all the different screens. All right, Article 24 is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into the agreement with the land, it's Soul Farm Homestead, and this is a project that several of us have been working on for a long time, and it would be mutually beneficial to both communities. It would ease the tax burden on Soul Homestead, which is a, you know, local, regional nonprofit agency that does really tremendous work, and it would enable us to get access to that public open space area that's near our lots that are currently for sale at Two Brooks Preserve. Our plan is to take an operative approach with the town of Middleborough, who's currently also wrapped up in this lease agreement, and also working with Soul Homestead, and the intent would be that we would essentially sign a lease with them being Middleborough, and the cost of the lease would take into consideration us portion of the property that would be earmarked for a parking area, a trailhead area, and for useful purposes, all similar in facilitating use of that public open space and making it accessible for everybody, as well as for Soul Homestead to run some of their educational programs and to go out there. So this article is the product of a lot of work and a lot of kind of talking back and forth between us, Middleborough, Soul Homestead, as well as both town councils involved.
I'm delighted to see it coming to a head.
Me too, it's been a long time in the making.
Yeah, a lot of work, no doubt, by many people.
So this requires both Boards.
Sorry, I muted myself, I thought I was done talking for a while. For the Finance Committee, I will make a motion to approve or recommend Article 24 as written.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
For the Selectmen, I'll make a motion to recommend Article 24 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article 25, this is a zoning article. The Planning Board is planning to do their public hearing and generate their recommendation on June 8th, so they'll give an oral report at town meetings, so this will just require a Board of Selectmen vote. So Article 25 is for the updating of the flood insurance rate maps with the new date. Some of them are being updated, and will have a new effective date of July 22, 2020.
And we're speaking and sponsoring this article, Liz?
Um, you know, we can, and I don't mind speaking to it or equipping one of you to speak to it, unless somebody comes in and has a real issue with the way that the map has been updated with respect to their individual property, I don't see it as being overly problematic. There is currently some legislation in the works that I believe was recently filed by Josh Cutler, and that would kind of put a halt on this project. Things got a little controversial because FEMA came out and essentially said, regardless of COVID-19, if towns are unable to have their town meetings by the new map date, everybody would thereby be removed from the National Flood Insurance Program, which would be very problematic for some people if they have mortgages or other insurance policies that are contingent upon them having flood insurance. And so, to my knowledge, there is legislation currently underway to halt some of this project, at least until towns can kind of get their feet under them and make sure that people are able to hold their town meetings. In the meantime, it seems like we should keep it on here, and then obviously if the project is halted and those map dates get suspended, we could always look to have it on a special town meeting warrant. We could always pass over it, I guess is what I'm trying to say, but I think for now, it would be in our best interest to stay the course in case that legislation doesn't pass. We don't want our residents impacted by that and removed. We don't want our residents impacted by that and removed from the flood.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that explanation. All right, John or Mark, you have any questions? John Trainer?
No.
Okay, all right, I'll make a recommendation or the motion that the selectmen recommend Article 25 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Article 26 is part of our bylaw codification that Tara had started back when she was in the town clerk's role. And this is to digitize our zoning bylaw. There is one change from what I sent out earlier. The planning board chair and bylaw review committee chair itself were kind of going back and forth today with the woman from the general code company. And we realized that if we pass this with the May 2019 date in it, it could call into question and repeal what was done at the December 2019 special town meeting. So it looks like right now we're changing that date right at the beginning of the article where it says, as amended through the May 2019 annual town meeting. I'm going to edit that to say through the December 2019 special town meeting, if that's okay with everyone. And that would encapsulate those additional changes that town meeting approved in December. The only challenge with this part is we have to figure out if that code company can get us an updated final version to be posted on our website by Friday. So more to come on that, but I think we're safer if we authorize it with that December date. And that was how I left it with the other people. We were exchanging some messages earlier today. So it would be approving it as written, but with changing May 2019 annual to December 2019 special.
It makes sense.
Of selectmen vote.
All right, John and Mark, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 26 as amended through December 2019 special town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, Article 27 is same project, but this is for the general bylaws. And again, I want to change December 2019, change it to December 2019 special town meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 27 that is amended through December 2019 special town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, and now Article 28 is for $3,100. And this is for the same, to continue the bylaw codification, we have to pay for some additions. Anytime we pass new bylaws, there is a separate cost for that, along with the maintenance fee. We, it'll be left in that article, but we need the additional 3,100 to be able to carry us through fiscal 21. Boards too.
Finance committee?
Yeah. Sorry, I was muted again. I'll make a motion for the finance committee to approve Article 28 as written for $3,100.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 28 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, so Article 29 and the next few that come after that, these are to authorize the selectmen to enter into pilot agreements with some, for some various solar projects that have been permitted. I'm mentioning these kind of as an aside. A lot of towns are taking some of the things like this off of their town meeting warrants and putting them off until a special town meeting, like a date to be determined. In, to be fair, with everything going on with COVID, assessors have not started negotiating for pilots that are on here. And I think some people would say, well, that's fine. All the articles are simply doing is authorizing the negotiation process and authorizing the selectmen to ultimately enter into these agreements. But just going on some experience where I worked for prior, found in the past, when, when a pro town meeting with these pilot agreements, some residents have very informed questions. They want to know, well, what are the terms of the pilots? How many years? What is the percentage of taxes being paid? Is it increasing over the years? Is it decreasing over the years? And I don't feel that anybody would be equipped to honestly answer those questions. So I'm just kind of putting that out there. You know, I think it's fine if we want to keep them on there and consider passing over them or, or not going ahead with them. I just don't want to put anybody in an awkward position, the Board of Assessors included, if somebody stands up at town and has an intelligent question to ask and due to COVID, we simply don't have any answers. But I'm not looking to kick the can down the road with some of these. I know the people from both solar companies have been in touch with both Wendy and I almost on a weekly basis. So they're very eager to start this negotiation process and move forward. So I'm not looking to hinder that progress. They're already permitted facilities. So it's not really opening up a debate about the solar facilities themselves. You know, when I talked to Wendy, she sounded like she would, was willing to take the questions. But I'm just, I don't want to put anybody in an awkward position and make it seem like we're well on our way to negotiating these. We've, between delays on from council, because they're looking into some other stuff on some historic projects for us and fixing some assignment issues. I don't know. It's really kind of a, a policy question, I think, sort of for the Board of Selectmen. Are doing is they're putting off some of the non-essential items like this in order to shorten the length of their town meetings and to reduce the likelihood of a town meeting, you know, either people needing to be congregated for more time than needed or for the possibility of it having to yet another night. A lot of people are trying to streamline their warrants. So I just wanted to bring it up. But if we're okay with it, you know?
I think I would prefer to see him stay on, only because I'm not a fan of special town meetings.
Okay.
And we can always pass over them if we get to the meeting and find out that we don't have all the information we need.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I'd like to dream that we won't have to have a special in September or October. And I think if we pass these over, we might be setting ourselves up for that. So I, I hear the risk of leaving them on, but I think I'm in favor of that too.
Okay.
I'm in favor of leaving them on as well, even if there is no action taken this year. People at least know these are something that's going to be coming, that, you know, is in the works. So, so Liz, is there any harm if we don't negotiate a pilot this year?
Um, not really any harm, but I think in good practice, like you want to get the pilot solidified and be able to know what that revenue will look like. You know, also in terms of just kind of bargaining with them in good faith and
Okay.
Good host community. Um, so what I'll plan to do then for these, I'll communicate with Wendy again and just get an update on where she's at with some of these. To answer at least basic questions and that she feels confident. And we can also, we have somebody from KP Law that we've been working with on the solar, on all of this stuff. So we can make sure that we're equipped to at least answer some questions. I do agree to an extent with, with you guys that, you know, if we don't do it, we are setting ourselves up for a special town meeting. And we may not want to do that for logistical reasons. So it might just be best to get them out of the way now. And the terms will be to be determined.
Okay.
This one, so Article 29, this is for Brook Street and it's Borrego. And this just requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
All right, I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend Article 29 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, Article 30 is for Upland Road, and this is also Borrego and requires Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 30 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, Article 31 is Lake Street, and this is Sunraise Development, and it requires Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 31 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, Article 32 is Main Street, and this is also Sunraise Development and requires Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 32 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, Article 33, this requires both boards, and it's to establish a natural resource protection fund. Natural resources in town will be funded primarily through the transfer of funds earned by the sale of town-owned land or other fund transfers as voted by town meeting. These funds are to be used to match federal, state, or private and charitable grants and/or to fund other natural resource protection efforts that protect land for watershed protection, groundwater sources, flood control, critical habitats, passive recreation, wellhead protection and related benefits. And this was submitted by the Conservation Commission.
So my initial reaction was that this is pretty broad. If we sell any land, it's automatically going to be considered, the monies would go to the Conservation Committee?
Well, that would require a vote of town meeting, but it's to establish the fund so that we would have the ability to transfer the funds if town meeting voted to.
I'm willing to speak, this is Linda, I can speak up whenever you guys are ready on this.
Go ahead, Linda.
Um, yeah, this, as Liz was just saying, that we thought it would be useful to set up the ability to have this fund and to set it up right away. Because if, unless things change radically, and of course, they might at the state level. But we can fore, excuse me, foresee that in the next year. So we could be submitting grants for wellhead protection, which as you might remember, DEP said we were in disastrous need of doing something to get community wells established. And we're also submitting grants to this municipal vulnerability program, the MVP. Both of these require matching funds to be evidenced in the application, that you can say where you're going to be getting your money from. So with that kind of a cue, I mean, these are, these are grants that would protect groundwater. They're for flood control, they're for the critical habitats, they're for wells. So there are things that are sort of green infrastructure, if you will. They're a new way of thinking about capital. In addition to buildings and equipment, we should be putting money into protecting flood zones and places that might erode or that might protect our groundwater and our wells. But the applications are different, that you have to state at the beginning where you think you're going to be getting your matching funds from. So this was a way to think, you know, maybe we could, in the happy instance, in a week or two, if we had a surplus from selling Two Brooks, which I am making no predictions on at all, don't read anything into this, but it just looked, it, you know, it seemed like if we made a little money, that would be a way to have a fund set up already that was established and to put something in it. So at least in an application, whether it be for wells or watershed protection, we could show that we have some capacity without waiting for a town meeting. Because otherwise, I'm afraid we would probably be having to ask for special town meetings because of the due dates. So we're just sharing with you this new dilemma that will come up. We don't know now with the change in state issues, you know, what, what they'll be doing. But these programs right now say they're going ahead.
All right, any questions for Linda?
Well, that doesn't really answer John's question. Does that, does
No, it doesn't.
Is the way the article written, that the sale of any town-owned property would result in the money being transferred to this fund?
That is what, that is what that says. We don't think there's a lot of town-owned property that gets sold very often.
Well, but for example, for example, the fire department trailer was recently sold, and you're saying that you should get that money?
No, sale of town-owned land. It says town-owned land.
Oh, okay, my, my bad.
Yeah, I'm still a little
Yeah. And the auction items, I haven't talked recently with Colleen, but the, the number of auction items that are, that are made each year and the return on them is fairly modest. So this is a startup. This is a kickoff for us to see where, where can we go to sort of be ready when we put in the application.
The only concern I would have, Linda, is once this gets written and baked into the books, we don't know what's going to happen five years out. And all of a sudden, we're, we're in a position where the money's absolutely going. I'm not against it, but I just would like a cap of some kind.
Yeah, my, I, I would be open to that. I think, I, I think anything, I doubt it's going to be a lot of money, frankly, that comes in through this method. And we were looking at least to have a gesture saying, hey, the town has made, has made provisions to start paying into such a fund in order to earn these. The, the matching monies can be three to one and four to one. The size of the grants that we could qualify for are substantial. So it's worth, you know, we thought it's worth trying to put some money down. And, you know, I'll, we're open for suggestions on how to best do it. Unfortunately, I mean, if you don't want to do it now, we may have to ask, you know, I guess for a special town meeting just to qualify. And that's something to be worked out as we go along in these things. That's why it's here right now.
So may I, this is, this is, it's Barbara John. I'd just like to ask either Christine or Liz a question. Has town council approved the wording of this article? Because currently, the sale of town property by state law goes into a separate account and then has to be voted out at a town meeting.
So he's, he saw this article, and he didn't really comment on it one way or another. It was one that he had no comment on. So obviously, he read through the warrant in its entirety. I'm wondering, though, if we could adjust the wording a little bit and say something that implies that, you know, the sale of town-owned land would be one potential funding source, but maybe not giving it an auto pass to that. Because I still think, like Barbara was saying, the wording is tricky, where it says, or other fund transfers voted by town meeting. I'm almost wondering if council read that as meaning that even a fund transfer from sale of town property to this new one would require a town meeting vote. I would assume that any transfer would require it, but maybe we could specify that and just adjust the wording a little bit.
I, I think maybe there, we didn't even, that, because when I read this the first time, that's the way I read it, that even town-owned land that was sold, the transfer would be voted by town meeting.
Correct.
And we're not opposed to that, just so you know. We, we on, you know, Concom Open Space are not opposed to that. But again, we thought it might be useful to have a deposit account that we can say in an MVP or wellhead application, aha, we have a fund, it has 30,000 in it, that'll be a down payment towards our match. You know, it would be sort of a show of capacity. So, and I, we, we looked around for other towns that do this. They use their conservation fund most often, but we don't, we haven't, we have one legally, but we don't have any money in it. And that does not require a vote of town meeting. So we thought that might be a bridge too far at this point, even though that is commonly how other towns do it. So this was sort of a halfway measure to say, you know, we don't mind it having a vote at town meeting, maybe it will help to have some money on deposit. You know, either that, or maybe this is a way to raise the principle that, you know, if we have capital monies, they will be if we have capital monies, they will be used for green infrastructure, infrastructure now, you know, the natural infrastructure, as well as for buildings and equipment. So anyhow, we're just, sometime in the next year, this is possible to come up if the grant programs stay alive.
Is it possible to put something like a $10,000 or $20,000, or do you think that, you just don't know?
Well, you could, but I think frankly, it's, I mean, I think it's so small that it almost wouldn't be, be worth it. These grants count, are $200,000 to $400,000 quite often. If we're buying part of a, a community wellhead that's a permanent protection, that's 11 acres of land, it depends where in the town it would be. So, you know, it would be maybe a nice token, but I, I think the actual match will end up being, say, you know, a 20 or 30 or 40 percent, not 40, but 20 or 30 percent match most of the time. So I don't know, I'm not, you know, we, we looked around, the best we could come up with is a conservation fund, which we didn't think would be palatable.
Linda, would it work for you if the wording was adjusted a little bit and it said, "to be funded primarily through town meeting-approved transfers of funds earned by the sale of town-owned land or other fund transfers," so that it implies specifically that town meeting would have to approve said transfer? My assumption is...
That's fine, it's just a timing issue that you guys, we can think of. I don't want to slow you guys down now. We will just say a lot of the, like, the wellheads are doing, are due in November. The wellhead applications are due in November, every single year. So, you know, and we have just gotten the report in, we have a lot of information. Whether we'll get it done by November, I don't know, but you know, that's an example of, do we really want to pull a special meeting together in, you know, September to do this? So, you know, it could be that it's going to be such a crazy year, we don't have to tangle with it this year, but a year from now, we'll be putting in another grant, hopefully, for some of these other things on flooding and stuff. So, you know, we can take it off right now and pass over it, but we will need some creative thinking. We could go the way that other towns have done and talk more about that, but we didn't think that was the way probably people would want to go, but that's the way other people do it.
Would it, would it work if we just put that, like, it's the little play on words and said, "to be funded through town meeting-approved transfers of funds such as through the sale of town-owned..."
I don't, I don't object to that at all, except that then will we have to have a special town meeting just to approve this transfer, whatever it is?
We would, we would.
Yes, we would.
Now that I'm rereading the language, I'm wondering if that's how Council read it, where it says, "or other town meeting-approved."
Right.
Barbara was saying...
And we had no trouble with that, to be honest. We, we left it that way because we thought it was appropriate for town meeting to approve it. We just wanted the ability to show possible matching funds when we applied.
Right, no, that makes sense. My assumption is that when Council read it, that he interpreted that as, and I can't speak for him or his interpretation, but my assumption is that he viewed it as, well, you know, town meeting will still approve that transfer. I don't think that money can just go on autopilot, and the second it comes in, auto-divert to that fund. It does have to go into the sale of town property account, like Barbara mentioned.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm open to things. The conservation fund was set up for this, the legal conservation. It does this, it goes in there once, and you don't need a town meeting, which is why most towns use it, because they can apply for grants and get their business done. They can acquire things and do, you know, once, they have one big pass-through, and the selectmen still have to sign off on the actual grant applications. So you have the, you have the institutional sign-off to go and ask for a wellhead grant. But you don't have to wait for town meeting to use that money, once it goes into the conservation fund. So maybe we should just ride over this right now. If it's going to have to go back to town meeting or have a special town meeting, it won't save any, any time to vote this right now. And, and I admit it's confusing, and we need to find a way to get out of this the most efficient way we all can without having to have extra town meetings. So I'd, I'd be willing to pull it and say, let's work on this, but, or, or use your words, although acknowledging that if we do it, then we have to have a special town meeting.
Why do we have to have special town meetings? You're losing me there.
Well, well, like, if you have a, if you have a November application, now we could try to do a special, a regular town meeting next year that approved it for the following November and the following April.
Yeah, what's wrong with that?
You know, but it means we'll always have to hit the right cycle in the grant cycle, and you don't want to miss money that's available when it's available, you know.
One of the things, Linda, that's a little bit of my concern, too, is I believe we have other things that we're thinking about long-term, like affordable housing.
Right, absolutely.
And I don't, you know, I think when things get in the queue, they're going to have to be judged against each other. I'd hate to see one automatically move to the, to the start of the line because of this wording.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way that we don't put ourselves at risk?
And I would be open to that. This, this is to be able to provide proof of matching. I think that, I think the income from this approach is going to be modest. I mean, I don't see this as a windfall, sorry to say, maybe, but I don't. I think, I don't think there's very, very much money. So it's whatever is going to be the most efficient for us to be prepared to pursue grants. I mean, I'm starting this work right now on the MVP grant that's due in June, and they are very excited about it. We have so many problems and so many needs in terms of flood control, stormwater control, river runoff, groundwater management, you name it, they think we're great, because we have so many problems. This first year, the match is pretty low, and it can be a lot of in-kind, so I'm not so worried. But the next ground would be next April for going back in, if we can hit that cycle. So this was just to raise the issue of how do we have some money at hand? And we can, you know, whatever works, we can find a way through it. I mean, maybe we should go to the conservation fund idea that other towns use, because this, again, the selectmen maintain control when a grant is submitted. And if they didn't think it was the appropriate grant to submit, it wouldn't go in. So I think we can separate out the money from the actual function.
Yeah, but, but Linda, this is John. I, I think what Liz is proposing allows to set up the account, and then as we have the sale of town properties, the money goes into the town properties account. And then we get to town meeting, and we can allocate money in there, whether we have an immediate grant application or not. I think...
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
I think what it's doing is it sets it up, it creates the whole mechanism. You won't have it for November, unless we have a special town meeting and we sell some property, which is not very likely, you know, given everything, but...
No, that's right.
There, so that if we sell...
Yeah, I think, well, I think I agree with John.
We, we can do that. So I, I think you're, I think you're getting much closer to what you need. It just preserves the, hey, at that point in time, we have to stack rank.
Oops, hello?
We froze.
We lost John, he froze, yeah.
But I like where he was going, I mean, we are all for that.
He left us hanging, John.
Yeah, we always intend a town meeting to approve it. So I think what he's saying is if we set up a pot of money and make a deliberate decision at a town meeting, the money will then be sitting there in this, you know, subsequently, and we can use it when the application rolls around.
Well, I think we were supporting Liz's verbiage, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that was good.
Yeah, so let's give that a try, and, you know, who knows what this coming year is going to be bringing in terms of opportunities, but it's, it's already come up in terms of us, you know, what's on the desk. So, so let's give that a try and see what happens.
Okay.
So 33 now has been reworded to say, "funded primarily through town meeting-approved transfers of funds earned by the sale of town-owned land or other transfers." So this will require votes from both boards.
Liz, can I ask you a question? I, I just want to make sure that this isn't an automatic, that the town has, is there any way to put like a "may" in there, "may be funded through the transfer," or something, where, you know, we may not want to put...
So why don't we say, I think we're protected by changing the language, like I mentioned, to say, "town meeting-approved."
Okay.
Why don't we say, well, it says to be funded, look, all right, "to see if the town will vote to establish a natural resource protection fund to protect key natural resources in Plimpton, "to be funded primarily through town meeting-approved transfers of funds earned by sale of town-owned land." Do you want me to add a "may" in there?
Well, it, it seems like we've got it covered, because there's, there's the two sources of money. It's either going to be a fund transfer or the town-owned land, so...
Why don't we say, if you want the word "may" in there, why don't we say, "to protect key natural resources in Plimpton, "and this may be funded through town meeting-approved transfers of funds?"
What about donations, too?
Right.
Oh, it doesn't exclude that donation, don't I...
It doesn't exclude donations, it says, "or other, or other fund transfers."
Yeah.
Well, and the donation isn't even that, a donation comes directly in, but that's where the primarily funded by...
Right, I think we're covered now that we know that it's...
It doesn't go there.
Yeah, if town meeting doesn't vote it, it won't go in there.
Okay, all right.
I changed it, so it looks different than your version. I put, "town meeting-approved transfers of funds earned by the sale of town-owned land or other fund transfers."
Beautiful, so then there'd be an opportunity to talk about it on Town Meeting floor.
Yes.
Yeah, which was always our understanding of that clause anyhow. So it's just a matter of, I think we're ending up at least where we thought we'd end up. So that's, that's good, and thank you, and we'll learn about it as we go along. You know, see what it works.
Okay, any more questions for Linda? FinCom, are you ready to make a vote?
No. I'll, I'll defer to the rest of the committee. I personally am, am not comfortable voting on it at this point until I can see it in black and white and, and think about it for a second. So I'm perfectly willing to, to vote on it prior to Town Meeting, so you'll have our vote at the floor of Town Meeting. But at the moment, I, I'm not comfortable bringing this for a vote. But if, if the rest of the committee chooses to do so, that's fine. If someone wants to make a motion, I will certainly entertain it.
I would rather wait.
Anyone on FinCom have a motion?
Yeah, Nate, I think I agree with you. I'd just rather see the black and white so I could get my brain around it. I'm all for having an account or a mechanism to receive the funds. I just want to get, just see it so I can fully understand what I'm voting on.
Yep, absolutely, couldn't have said it better myself, Mike, thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll defer, we'll defer on this one for now.
All right, John and Mark, what do you think?
I'm okay voting on it with the language change.
John, are you okay?
I assume we're going to have a, a chance to see what the Finance Committee, you know, written response is. I kind of like to wait, so we're all in agreement. But get it done before, you know, this has to go out.
It's fine, well, it's going out like tomorrow, it's going to print. So you won't have an opportunity to vote and have it printed in the warrant, but you can still stand up at Town Meeting and give the recommendation of the board at that point. But it won't make it to print.
All right, I'd like to see it in its final form, too, before I make a recommendation.
So then I'll keep it in the warrant, but just not print any recommendations from either board? Is that okay? Is that the general consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Mark, holding off until making a recommendation at Town Meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd prefer otherwise, but I understand, and yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll make our recommendations, both Finance Committee and Selectmen, for Article 33 on Town Meeting floor.
Okay. Article 34 is for $5,500. It's from the sale of farm pumps formerly used on the Two Brooks Preserve land. I'm transferring that money to the Two Brooks Preserve Fund for the purpose of constructing public access areas, including parking lots, trails, fencing, kiosks, signs, and related appurtenances. And this was submitted by the Conservation Commission and requires a vote of both boards.
Can I speak on this one, please?
It's Barbara.
Yes.
I have a problem, a $5,500, and I put a source in, it's not the article itself, it's the wording of it. I would like to see it changed to formerly used on the Two Brooks Preserve land for the purpose of constructing public access areas, et cetera. I would like the, the Two Brooks Preserve Fund eliminated from that, because that's a donation account, it's not an article account or anything else. It's a donation account, a gifts and donations account, that I think should remain separate from putting more money in it from other sources. But that's up to you, folks.
I don't see where that presents a problem, since they're going to get the funds. I, I, I don't have a problem doing what Barbara wants to do.
Barbara, or Linda, why isn't the money going into Article 33?
No, that, no, we're in 34.
Are you, are you asking about the pumps, Barbara, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, my question is...
No, no, all I'm asking, Linda, is that instead of putting this $5,500 into the donations account that you have set up and that has been, been used, to create a separate article for it. So you have the article itself for $5,500 for the purpose of constructing public access, including lots and everything else. Segregate it from the donation account.
Well, I don't, that's sort of in your bailiwick. I don't really care where, if it goes to Two Brooks Fund or the Conservation Fund, as long as it doesn't become an, an annual fund, you know, that, that flips over at the end of the year, as long as it stays wherever we put it.
Oh, it, no, 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 I'm not, not saying a, a budget line in any way, shape, or form. This would be an article like any other that would go on for infinity until it was closed out or stopped using.
Well, then, you know, that's sort of, you know, as long as the $5,500's there, this will be used for that land, especially on Soul Street.
Right, that's fine.
Yeah, so, whatever you, however you would do it, that it would be available to be used, that's all we care about.
I would just take out the words, "Two Brooks Preserve Land Find to the Two Brooks Preserve for the purpose of," I'd go, "formerly used on the Two Brooks Preserve land for the purpose of constructing public access areas." I would cut out the words, "the Two Brooks Preserve Fund." Cut that right out of there and put it in a separate article.
So if we're going to do that, then it sounds to me where that money is already in our... Didn't that get certified with the free cash?
Yes.
So are we better off changing 34 then to just simply say, "raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds," and just word it like we would any other monetary article? And then when we do with the motions, we can identify what it's coming out of?
That's fine, I'll take it and do it that way if you want, and give you a motion.
Okay, so let's plan on that then, for the purposes of Selectmen and FinCom, if they're going to take a vote. So we won't transfer it to the Two Brooks Fund, I guess, is what we're saying, that we'll just have it generated and it will sit in the article like any other article expense would.
Correct.
And utilize it for the purpose that's denoted in the article. Okay, so is everyone clear what we're doing? This would require a vote of both boards.
I think the issue that FinCom had with this article was the process that was followed or not followed for the disposition of town property. I don't think any of us objects to the use, proposed use of the money, or, or certainly the park itself. But I think we felt that, that there is a pretty strict set of guidelines and, and regulations for how things should be disposed of that were not apparently followed in this particular case. Therefore, the money is not necessarily conservation money, it's town money. So the fact that we're, we're now changing this to a raise and appropriate, I guess, allays some of those...
No, it's, it's coming from free cash, Nate. It's not coming to raise and appropriate, it's coming from free cash, and that's where...
My point is still, my point, thank you, Barb, my point is still the same. It's not, it's, it's, it's not, it wasn't the conservation... My point is still, my point, thank you, Barb. My point is still the same. It's not, it's, it's, it's not, it wasn't the Conservation Commission's property to just sell outright without going through the process. Therefore, they shouldn't necessarily expect the money. That was, that's the crux of the FinCom's objection to this article.
Board members, Rick Burnett is here as well to, happy to speak to this circumstance if anybody has questions about it.
Liz, what, what should the process have been to sell the pumps from town owned land?
The pumps were sold, the, the problem occurred when we didn't even know it. The pumps, we were, Colleen and I were asked where it could go, if it could go in the Two Brooks Preserve account. I said, no, it had to go into sale of town property. However, when the check was deposited, we had no idea that it was this money and it was deposited in the Conservation Commission regular general fees account and was closed out through, yes.
It was? I didn't realize that. I thought it went to the town's general money. Never mind.
Well, the Conservation Commission's is a portion of the town's general money. You have a Conservation Commission fees section of the town's regular funding and it went to the town's regular money. It never went into sale of town property.
You know, the, that, this is all accounting issue. I thought, I thought the question was, what's the process that you go through before property can be sold by the town, town owned property?
Right.
That's correct. I think, I think that was.
It's both, I believe.
Part of our objection.
Yes.
So we should have probably advertised this as we have with other things. I mean, even the car that we sold, we had to put it in the paper and we advertised and accepted bids on it.
Correct.
I didn't know we sold these.
There's a whole process. So the selectmen declared them as surplus and then typically you follow the whole process under 30B for disposition of town owned property and the process was not followed. And then I think what complicated matters even further was that when this money was received, you know, whether there were some communications issues or whatever that was, it went to the general, it ended up going back to like the general fund and got certified with free cash from last year. So the money never made it to that sale of town property account because nobody really knew at the time what it was for. It was just received like a regular, like if somebody had paid a fee or a bill.
A regular turnover.
Yes, a regular turnover. But that was, that was kind of part two of the issues. Part one was that, that regular process, if you recall what we went through when I advertised and everything, when we sold the pumper truck, when we sold, when we sold the engine from the old police station, that process we, we didn't go through. So that's part of the reason why the monies, it was harder to track. But they were able to identify that it was made. It was for $5,500. So I think to Linda's point, she's looking to get that available for her to utilize, for her group to utilize at that Two Brooks Preserve site for some trail improvements in the parking area and some of those items.
But isn't that what the donation account was for?
It, it was, but I, I will say this for Rick. You know, this is a, I'll be honest, this is a function of sometimes volunteers don't know all the rules and we put in the turnover and it, you know, and it got, it got deposited and off we went. And the ConCom is the nominal, you know, manager for the town under the deed. So, you know, Rick paid his own crew to take out the pumps and take it down and get it, generate some cash for us so that we could get some money for the parking lot because that is, you know, that was needed. So, you know, we appreciate there are probably some rules that we bumped into or crossed, but the bottom line is that we don't have the money right now to use for that Soul Street entrance and it's delightful that hopefully this will pass in a couple of weeks. But unless some, you know, I, I'm not gonna predict what's gonna happen. I don't wanna go on record about anything. But this money was raised specifically and, and Rick went to a lot of trouble to make this money available so that we would have something for the parking lot. So I'm sorry if we crossed some wires here. And it was all with good intent along the way. And so we hear it, we hear the warning for the future.
But that didn't answer my question. Isn't, isn't that what, what you raised donations for was to, was to make a?
No, the donations were in general for anything on Two Brooks. We have, we raised a hundred thousand.
Isn't this something on Two Brooks?
Yes, but the $100,000 has been used to play, pay down the bond and also to pay the first year's fee and the second year's fee, which is now in the account. So most of that has been used up and we'll have to see how the sale goes in the next couple of weeks. We have to reserve some there. Then, you know, I, I can't predict what's gonna happen there. But we've spent that down. We lowered the bond by over fifty, by $50,000 and paid it down this year as well as paying the fees. So it was used.
My own personal opinion is we should, you know, you, the $5,500 should go to Two Brooks. I know there was a little hiccup in the process, but so we, now we know.
Right, right.
Right.
Well, it probably wouldn't be an idea to put any information about where the money came from in here. It just do raise and appropriate and not have any reference to the sale as Liz recommended and just so we raise it appropriate $5,500 bucks for the purpose of constructing public access areas and leave it at that.
What if we just do transfer from free cash, which is what I've got as a source?
Yeah, or transfer from free cash, right. Because I think anything else is just pointing out that this wasn't done properly and it's probably not a discussion you wanna have on town meeting floor.
No, I agree.
Okay. So it sounds like it will read then, taking everyone's recommendations, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,500 for the purpose of constructing public access areas, including parking lots, trails, fencing, kiosks, signs, and related appurtenances, or take any other action relative there, too.
Perfect.
Is everybody good?
I, I have a concern, I guess. And I, I am totally in favor of this $5,500 getting used. I mean, it came from the pumps. The intent was to put the money back into the land. But we have been trying to do this project without going to the town and asking for additional funding. If we leave out the pump part of this, and I understand why that's being suggested, but then it looks to the public like we've gone to the town and asked for money for improvement. So I'm in a funny position because I am totally in favor of this money getting used, but I, I, I don't particularly like the perception that we're going to the town and asking for money on something that we've otherwise done with CPA money and with, with the sale and with fundraising.
And, and I have to, I share that sentiment, Mark, because we have, we've tried so hard on both parks. We haven't taken any general town money yet. And we don't, you know, we hope not to. So I, I know some will raise, is this town money? And it's, you know, it would be nice to be able to say, no, we, you know, we sold the pumps, the pumps. You know, there's, it's arranged. So.
Hey, Rick Burnett, I think is unmuted. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry for jumping in late here. I, I'm new to the phone part of this meeting. If we can back up a little bit further, going way back to when we were writing the article to purchase Two Brooks, you know, we had been counting on that income on a very tight budget that we were, we were working with and working within. And so it, it came about that we were able to purchase this place. And apparently if we had written it into the original warrant article, the money from those pumps could have just stayed with the parks. And that's where the, the original problem started. These pumps are specific pieces of equipment to, specific to cranberry bogs. It may have been a little bit of a rush to try to hit this, the late winter, spring cranberry season when cranberry growers are looking for this type of equipment. So, you know, we, we had talked about it in, in all of our meetings and said that it's something that needs to take place because it's, it's equipment that's sitting up there. There's been vandalism over the years. You know, kids, school vacation, light pump house is on fire and then you lose everything inside. So we just kinda took it upon ourselves and, and made it happen. Went to Stern's Irrigation, which is the place to go for cranberry equipment and, and stuff like this. He set a price. He knows the pricing of this used equipment. He sells it for people all the time. So he, he handled the sale for us at not, no profit to himself. The cranberry grower came, made an offer and he accepted it for us and, and the check came to the town. Clear and simple. There again, a lot of volunteer hours went in, actually paid hours went in to procure the equipment to get it down there safely and, and make it all happen. So if we jumped the gun a little bit, I'm sorry, sorry for that and we'll know better next time. So I, I appreciate all your words, nothing, to make, to make this happen.
Liz, question for you. Is there any exposure to us if, for violation of 30B?
Potentially. Potentially. I mean, it was over and done with a long time ago. I think it's a little different where it was something that we were selling. It wasn't like we were looking to procure services. That would be more problematic. In this case, we were selling something and received a profit for it. So I don't really know, but I, I don't know.
I don't know why we can't just go with what Barbara wanted, eliminate those four words and move the article forward.
I, I think that the way that Christine proposed the article and taking out the bit about the pumps and treat it like any other article that we would where somebody was looking for funding is probably a better approach.
Well, you're gonna have to explain it on the floor.
Right, but you don't have it in writing.
I don't know. It just seems a little odd to me, that's all.
It's gonna be an awkward conversation this year of all years. People are gonna wonder why we're not going.
Exactly.
For community preservation fund money. Why, why, why is this article being proposed and other ones are being rejected this year?
Yeah. I am really uncomfortable. I, as much as I want this money to go to what it should go to, I, I think we're marching into a quagmire here in the last article of the town meeting. I, I think we could get into all kinds of problems in places we don't wanna go. I think even more, I am really concerned about CPA funded projects, which we have touted as not using town money, using town money. So I'm in a weird position, but I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with this article, no matter how we word it at this point.
Just to be clear, the, the land that we'd be using it on is not covered by the CPA article. If it was, we'd have some money. So we can't use the CPA money that came for Two Brooks on this section of the land. That's why we're, you know, up a creek without a paddle. We don't have mon, that money is not available to us for this new acreage off Soul Street or in the front. So we need money for access and, you know, I, I hear that. I am with Mark is that I don't like people thinking we're taking town money. We're so careful not to take town money that maybe if it could be said orally, but, you know, I would, I wish we could just say that we sold the pumps. Most people are not gonna care. I mean, they went to a, it went to a legitimate broker that it was, it was widely available to anyone in that specialized field. Anyone could have bought it. So it was not an inside job. It was a, it was a public sale. And so we broke a few of the procedural rules.
But it wasn't a public sale.
It wasn't a public sale. If it was a public sale, none of us would have a problem with it.
Yeah, it wasn't public by the town, but it wasn't.
It was not a public sale. Don't call it that. It was not a public sale.
Okay. Public means by the town?
Advertised and seen yours.
Okay, 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 okay. So, well, there you go. That's.
People, this is a recorded meeting that's gonna be published. I think we have to be very careful to take the high ground here. At worst, Linda, I think we just have to redouble our fundraising efforts and get the money that way. I am so sorry to be sort of going against this article, but I'm very uncomfortable with the position we're getting put in.
Just, just a quick question for everybody. Do, does anybody know, this is Michael, if this was handled through a third party, so in other words, a broker, if the broker happened to advertise it publicly, would that qualify? I don't know.
That would be a question, I think, for the state. That would be a question that we'd call into the hotline for.
So that, that could be something that maybe could be a workaround if Stern's Irrigation did that, that potentially in the article could be, you know, a reference to handled through, you know, or that could get us out just as, as a backstop that we could have in our back pocket. It certainly couldn't hurt to, to find out, I would think.
Does it make sense, given the timing, to change the article to the way that Barbara has recommended it and to not put a recommendation on it at this point and to see what else sorts out? And then the decision can be made and discussed at town meeting? I mean, that, that's sort of the issue is that whether they did or didn't, you get to call, you're not gonna know by tomorrow for public.
So that sounds like a great idea. And also if, if you can't put the money back in the Two Brooks, but it's okay to put it in another town, town account, that makes it okay?
Well, if, if it went into the sale of town property, we would have had to have it come out of there and go into an article one way or another. But what they were trying to do to, is just to put, my only thing with it is I didn't like the idea that they were putting it in a donation account. I felt, felt it should stand alone as a town article like anything else and nothing more than that. That was my only purpose for bringing it up.
Well, that's, that makes, that makes sense. Makes perfect sense.
I just think it's important that we always are above board and, you know, we've, we're, I know there's a lot of, you know, you needed the money, but we need to follow policies and procedures so that we're always above board on action that we take. And this one is kinda sketchy. So I'm not comfortable recommending this now. I don't know if you wanna leave it on there and then talk about it on town meeting, or if you wanna pass it over and try to come up with the money somewhere else.
As far as the calling the state goes, if the Conservation Commission wants to contact the state and inquire, that's fine. Myself, with the procurement experience that I do have, I don't feel like the process was followed correctly necessarily. And I would not be comfortable making said phone call because it certainly was not a process that myself or the board of selectmen didn't correctly follow. If you see what I'm getting at, like if it was something that was an error on our end, I would have no problem owning up to that and making phone calls and figuring out how to rectify it or if there was a way around it. Honestly, we just have so much going on right now. If somebody from the Conservation Commission wants to try to get in touch with somebody from the state, I know that they're all working remotely right now, so I don't know how much luck you'll have. But that's fine. But I can tell you on my end, in my position, I'm not, I'm not making that phone call. I'm not comfortable.
Are you saying that the ConCom would call a, the procurement office, would still be calling the procurement office for this reading?
You would be, but I just, I think it's. You would be, but I just, I think it's an incredibly awkward.
Yeah, no, I, I see your point totally. I guess. Yeah, I'm coming. I understand that totally. I think maybe the way is to see if, what Sterns, if the Sterns, how they advertised it and to see if that's sort of a bridge that we can talk about, you know, that this was advertised by the Sterns, you know, brokerage agency or whatever they call themselves. And so it was available to, for people to know about. You know, maybe, maybe then we could try it, but it, it sounds to me, I know nothing about procurement except what I've learned in the last year, which it looks pretty rigid and if we broke the rules, you know, that sounds like, why would they?
It opens up the town to fines and I just don't want to see us having to.
No, not, no, no.
Pay a fine for something like all for this $5,500.
No, no, that's.
Move on for the time being and.
It's already done. I don't know why we're hashing this over. The money's in the government, in the town account.
Just to be absolutely clear, I, this is, is so typical, happens, a little tiny town with volunteers acting in good faith, but potentially just erring a bit. I mean, there were no ill intent here. It was the best intent, really the best intent to save the town money.
Where do we want to go with this?
Go ahead. Going back to the Barbara's idea, whoever it was, not to mention that where it's coming from and just ask for $5,500, would there be a prohibition on the town floor from saying that we gained this by selling the pumps or would that open the can of worms?
This is going to be in the paper anyways. I don't know why we're worrying about, we're here, it's going to be.
Yeah, because it's going to be in the paper already, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, well, there you go. Well, in that case, I'd like to have a warrant on the town meeting floor if it's in the paper already and we just say, hey, volunteers make mistakes sometimes. We need the money to open this parking lot. The money's sitting in the town coffers. If you want to support it, this is the time. Because we don't have it from other funds.
The thinking of this is I don't know who would be running up there to show this property for sale.
I didn't hear you.
How would you, how would you show a property like that for sale, the, the pumps for sale? Who would take care of that? You know? So just, not, they were sent to, they were sent to, you know, an authority, authority of that, of that piece of equipment. I mean, it's going to be Rick Burnett running people up to the Two Brooks to show them equipment that's, that's for sale or, you know, it's like we, we may have aired on part of it, but it, it, it went to the.
Right place. You got it to the right place to sell it.
It went to a place where you're going to get the highest dollar for it. You know, how much, what are we going to get for that $250,000 ambulance? You know, I mean, it's like when you put stuff out to auction, you're not going to get what, what it's worth. So, sorry, I'll apologize again, but I can check with Sterns to see what their advertising policy is. I'm happy to call procurement and propose a question if we think we should do that. If not, I'll, I'll leave it up to the boards here to make the decision.
Mark, are you okay with leaving the article on the warrant and then we'll just make recommendations on town meeting floor?
I think if I had my druthers, I'd love for the article to go away. I, I understand the, the other approach and I can live with it if that's what people are feeling like they want.
What about you, John?
I'd like to see the article stay on and we just either pass over or knock it out on the floor.
All right. I'm okay with it staying on too. But just not making a recommendation tonight.
With which wording, Christine?
With whatever wording you guys come up with, that it is what it is.
I would like to see the wording as Barbara proposed it because that's just an accounting issue. It's nothing else.
Are we keeping the wording that it's from the sale of the pumps?
No.
For the warrant draft?
I think it should be from the sale of the pumps. The money is in our account.
And that's where it came from.
And that's where it came from and was explained, like, you know, nobody did anything that was devious in the sense of trying to get away with something. It's just that we're volunteers and every time, sometimes we screw up because we don't always know the ins and outs of very law that's on the books.
Well said. And also we will know by then, we can explain what the Sterns did, you know, how they advertised it. And as Rick said, it is the place to go to get the best price. That's the known broker for this kind of equipment. They're the, that's where all the farmers go. So, you know, I think we eat a little crow, but I would like to see it brought up like this on the, with the credit that from the sale of farm, the pumps and have it explained. And unless you guys think it puts the town in jeopardy from the procurement office, that wouldn't be good. But otherwise I'd say we just say honestly, this is what happened. We think we still got a good result. The process wasn't quite what it should have been, but we need the money to open the parking lot.
I guess we need finance committee to make a decision on where they want to go with this.
I think though, in terms of the language, if we do keep it on at this stage, it makes sense to just say where it came from, that it was from.
Yeah, I do too.
It's a big secret. Everybody meant well.
Right.
That's been established. Everybody meant well and tried to make the most money for the town. And some processes weren't followed when all that played out, but that happens sometimes. And I don't know, I think at this stage, it's probably best to say where it came from so that it eliminates the question and we don't even, you know, need to keep going over it.
I think that's much more palatable to me than to look like we're asking for town funds, which we've never done so far.
Okay, so Barbara's motion was to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $5,500 raised from the sale of farm pumps formerly used on Two Brooks Preserve land for the purpose of constructing public access areas, including parking lots. Was that it, Barbara? Is that pretty much what she said?
That's exactly what I was asking for and didn't mean to stop this whole thing in any way. Stay from.
I think that works. I mean, I, just listening to it, I think that would be an acceptable excellent, it's the truth. It's exactly what happened and, you know, people are guilty like we're taking it out of their pockets.
I just didn't want it to go in the donation fund. That was my only thing.
I think, especially as they said, this year when people, when money's tight, I think it's important people know this money was raised, you know, it was, it did not come out of general funds. I think that's very important.
If, if it had gone in the sale of town property account like the other way, it would have read to come out of sale of town property for the same purpose.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we have an amended Article 34. Is FinCom going to make a recommendation?
Anybody on FinCom want to make a motion?
No.
I think we'll wait until town meeting on this one as well. Thank you.
I would prefer to wait too. I would like to hear about the process that the, the broker used to advertise the sale of the pumps before I'd be comfortable making a recommendation. Mark, I know you don't want it on there.
I'm fine with that as long as the article stays on the warrant.
Okay. All right. So are you okay with that, Mark? We'll just make our recommendation on town meeting floor?
Fine.
Okay. All right. So the neither finance committee or the selectman will be making a recommendation on Article 34. Recommendations will be made on town meeting floor.
Okay, we got one more, Liz.
Oh, and then the special.
Oh, yes. Can't forget that. Okay, so on the special, Article One is for $29,000 to 13 to pay for the final change order for the Plimpton Police Station building project.
Yeah, for the finance, for the finance committee, what she said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'm trying to find the, the warrant for the special. Oh, here we go. Okay, so that was Article One. Okay, all right, I'll make a motion. The selectmen recommend Article One of the special town meeting as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Guys, just so you know, most of these are from overlay surplus with a few, the school transfers and one other from some, from another source and that's it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Okay, Article Two is $6,897 to pay unpaid bills for a prior fiscal year.
Don't we usually say what these are for? Is it a bunch of them or?
Yeah, there's a bunch of them, John.
Okay.
I can, I can type out a list so it's in the motion if you want it. That's not a problem.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to have in case somebody asks.
That's fine. Yeah, there's legal bills, there's utility bills and whatnot.
Sorry, John.
I'm sorry.
Nope, it's fine, guys.
I'll make a motion that we recommend special town meeting Article Two in the amount of $6,897 for unpaid bills.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article Two as written in the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article Three is for $10,000 to the OPEB account.
So I have a question on this, that haven't we traditionally put in 20,000? Is this over and above 20 or is this just 10?
This is just 10, John, for this year. We started with 20 or 30, but it's been changed to 10, so.
Okay.
For the finance committee, I will make a motion that we recommend special town meeting Article Three to fund the OPEB in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion, oh, sorry, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article Three in the special town meeting warrant as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Article Four, early on in the process, we had $10,000. This is to add a sum of money to the town building and maintenance emergency article. We since changed the latest drafts of the warrant to simply say a sum of money and the intent was that we would have a better idea about town meeting, if there are any larger scale building changes that need to be made with respect to COVID-19. So the thought process at the time when Barbara and I had kind of talked it over was to remove that specific sum, just in preparation in case other issues came up. And we would obviously have to give the specific sum at town meeting as part of the motion. But I don't know what, what people.
Just for discussion purposes, we had used the figure of $50,000 at, at the most recent FinCom meeting, but that again was just for, we were just throwing it out there. It's not necessarily a recommendation one way or the other.
But there are, I mean, when you stop and think about like, we've already determined that the septic system issue at the townhouse, for example, unless we want to go forward and replace the entire thing, it's actually cheaper for us to call the person and have them snake the system and fix the issues that come up than it would be just to troubleshoot and correct one of the problems that we know exists. I know that sounds strange, but when you add up the cost of the emergency visits, even though it's significant, it's, to fix the one problem without replacing the whole system there would be an absolute nightmare and not cost effective at all. So given that plus improvements that need to be made for COVID-19, we have a leaking roof at the townhouse, which I think will end up needing to be its own article probably next year, that we're going to have to look at that. It just seemed like a smart decision at this stage to kind of reevaluate things and to take that $10,000 figure out. And like Nate said, they were tossing around a number of maybe 50,000. So I don't know.
Haven't we in the past said not to exceed, let's say 50,000 and then we just change it on the floor?
We could do that too. It's still in.
Whether it's, you know, 100,000, put whatever figure you want, as long as you can't go up, but you can always go down.
Correct.
Guys, can I, on the overlay, we have 170,000. Even if we use the 50 here, we, that will reduce it, that would be 103 of it. So we're not going anywhere near the total amount we have and there's a $10,000 article in the annual town meeting. I just picked the number of $50,000. Right now we're sitting with about four grand in that emergency account and that would go in a heartbeat if something went wrong within the townhouse. And I just figured with everything else that's going on, it might be a place to put a little money to use for emergencies in case they come up as the year goes on.
I, I think that's a smart decision and a good planning decision that Barbara was just speaking about. I'm wondering if we should word it and say a sum of money not to exceed $50,000 and then we'll refine it for the night of town meeting.
You can do that, that's fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. So this one will require, so it's now says to transfer a sum of money not to exceed $50,000 to be added to the town buildings and maintenance emergency article. And this requires both boards.
For the finance committee, I will recommend that we approve special town meeting Article Four not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
All right, for the selectmen, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article Four that the, with the caveat, the available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $50,000 in the Article Four of the special town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article Five is to make some line item transfers in the fiscal 2020 budget that was voted at last year's annual town meeting. And these are, this is for the Plimpton School Committee. One, all three of them are transfers from the vocational education line. One is for $1,069.16 to the special needs reserve fund. Another one is for $5,000 to the elementary school cost line. And then the third one is for $21,790 and that's to elementary school costs. The two elementary school costs, one is for the routine maintenance and cleaning of the sprinkler cistern and the other one is to purchase technology hardware, including document cameras, Chromebooks, Chromebook carts and iPads with cases. And this requires votes of both boards.
And, and just, just to note, we've actually asked the school to go ahead with the cistern maintenance and try and get that set up because it's likely that that will not happen between the 17th of June and the end of the month. And we also hopefully will have some money in the existing budget this year to deal with that. So most likely we will try and just pass over this particular item when we get to town meeting. Buying the technology is a little bit easier to do that on the 18th. And if we can save five, 5,000 more and come back to the town, then 5,000 more comes back to the town. And also just in, just to note, that means that there's probably about just over 21,000, 22,000 that will come back to the town from the bulk line at the end of the fiscal year.
Thanks, John. All right, any questions or comments for John?
Nope.
Okay, for the finance committee, I will make a motion that we recommend special town meeting Article Five as previously outlined in the amount, total amount of $27,860.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor? Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article Five as printed in the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, Article Six is for $8100 to be transferred out of the sale of town property account, and this was based from the sale of the fire department's modular home. And this will be going to cover the cost of repairs necessary for the Plimpton Fire Station, and this requires both boards.
For the Finance Committee, I'll make a motion that we recommend special town meeting Article Number Six in the amount of $8100.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right, I'll recommend this, or make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article Six of the special town meeting warrant as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Article Seven is to transfer the sum of $7,000 for the replacement of the fire department's ladders that were rendered out of service due to safety issues, and this requires both boards.
For the Finance Committee, I'll make or recommend, no, make a motion that we recommend Article Seven to replace the ladders for the fire department in the amount of $7,000.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article Seven as printed in the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
That'll do it. That's it.
Eight has been eliminated?
Yes.
We don't need eight.
Okay.
Beautiful. Yahoo.
You can not ask for money, so.
Well, thank you, everyone, for.
Hang on, hang on, sorry.
Go ahead, Nate.
If, if, if we're done with the budget stuff, the FinCon has three reserve fund transfers we need to vote on as part of our meeting, so.
Okay.
So you folks can leave if you're done. Thank you. But we'll take, we'll take about four minutes to do these, so if you want to bear with me, we can do that now.
Yeah, why don't we bear with you, because we actually still have things on our agenda.
Oh, okay, cool. So Finance Committee, we have three reserve fund transfers that we have, I believe, discussed previously. They are salary requests from, two from the police department and one from the fire department. So I will review those for you right now. The first is from the fire department. It's dated April 20. It's a transfer request for Budget Line 510, the fire EMS salary department. They are looking for an amount of $26,808.56. Not 57, just 56. 26, 808 dot 56. And this, they have, the explanation is that they've had some overtime accrued due to shortages, injury, and of course, COVID. So they don't anticipate any further overages because their staffing is stabilized now, but this is to offset a projected shortage in that salary line. So I'll make a motion for the Finance Committee that we approve the reserve fund transfer as just read.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Second transfer is from the police department. It's dated April 30. It's for line number 555, the police services line, which is the, essentially the salary line for the police department. The requested transfer amount is $26,500, and the explanation is that there were unfunded departing employee cash outs, payouts in the amount of $29,275. Folks that had retired were paid out for accrued sick time and such in the amount of 29,000, and they're looking to transfer 26,500. Liz, the only question I had about this, hopefully you can answer, is I see that one of the, one of the officers that's mentioned here was, is Pat Dillon. And so my question is, why is it going to the, shouldn't that portion of it go to the chief line, or does it not really matter?
I don't know that it matters that much. There was a transfer, he did note in there that some of it was for the chief's line. Was that on the updated version that I sent you?
Well, the next one that we haven't got to yet is, is, is the chief's line in particular, so.
Right.
I just, I was just curious as to why, why was not, why this, that $21,000 was not being requested out of the chief's salary line, if it was in fact, you know, going to him?
So I think that he prorated the amounts, like, he felt like he would have enough in the chief's line to cover a portion of it.
Okay.
Um, if you'd like, while you're looking at that, I can pull up the email from him.
No, that's fine. That, that, that makes sense if, 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 you know.
I had him do the math ahead of time. Basically, it was, because he sent me a big, kind of an explanation of like, oh, well, I'll, I'll have this left over and this, and this left over and that. And I said, like, just send me the bottom line, what you need, get through, and the reasoning. So that was a product of that.
Okay.
But I can get you the detailed breakdown if you need.
It, it's laid out here. I would, it just, it just caught my eye that, that the chief's name was showing up on the patrolman's line, basically. So again, for the FinCon, the amount that's being requested is $26,500 to be transferred to line number 555. I'll make a motion that we approve that transfer.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And finally, the last one is also dated April 30. It is for Police Line Number 550, the chief's salary. Similar to the last one that we just approved, there were unfunded departing employee payouts in the amount of $10,460.37. So they are looking for a transfer of $6,540, that's 6540, to fund those payouts for the, due to the retirement of Chief Dillon. I'll make a motion that we approve that reserve fund transfer as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. FinCon, do we have any other items for discussion?
Nate, I'll, I'll do those in the morning.
Okay, thank you, Barb.
Do you want to approve the minutes or, in the minutes of May 13?
Sure. Does anyone care to make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting on May 13?
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Hearing no other items, and we are at the end of our agenda. I will accept a motion to adjourn. Come on, let's make the Selectmen jealous.
Second.
All those in favor?
Who made the most?
Mike.
Mike did. Steve seconded.
Okay.
And we are adjourned at 8:09. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before you go, can we, usually, we'd like to give you a rave. Thank you all so much for all of your efforts, tonight included. This has definitely been a challenging budget cycle. Thank you so much.
I just want to confirm the spelling. That was R-A-V-E, right, not R-A-I-S-E?
To be determined.
Just checking, because it's unfunded if we did, right?
Right, it's an unfunded mandate.
Six to zero, hey.
They doubled it.
Yeah, exactly. All right, good night, FinCon. We've got to finish our meeting.
All right.
Good night, guys.
Good night, guys.
Okay.
Christine, Christine, this is Barbara. Do you need me for anything? Do you need me for anything?
No, I think we're good to go. No, we're good to go.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, good night and stay safe.
You, too. All right, so COVID updates, anything?
Oh, gosh. There's actually kind of a lot to report on that. In a nutshell, we're kind of finalizing anything that needs to be done with the building for the townhouse. Based on Governor's additional announcement today, we're still going with the plan of some staff being in the building next week to get their offices ready, however they need to, and reopening to the public in a limited fashion on first. Everything was pretty much as we assumed as far as the Governor's announcement went. The only thing that we're trying to iron out is the 25% occupancy rule that really will only come into play for the town clerk's office, the building department office, and the assessors' office. And they were, for the most part, going to be doing kind of a split schedule anyway. So I think we'll still be okay on that end. But we just want to be really clear and make sure that we're following all of the protocols, because we're actually required to self-certify that we're adhering to all of the protocols and best practices, and that will be posted where the public and the employees can view it. And our Board of Health will be in charge of compliance on that. So we just want to make sure that we, as a government entity, are doing our part to adhere to all of the requirements that are being put forth by the state. We expect to solidify some of our plans by the end of this week, and we will publicly update everyone so that the general public has an idea of what's going on and how the reopening will look. We also have plans underway to reopen the transfer station starting on Tuesday of next week, so May 26, and that will be reopened for normal hours, and they will start accepting the recyclables again. Still not doing the, the dentischool, the can redemption, because a lot of the redemption centers are still going to be closed. But we're going to resume the normal operations with accepting recyclables starting on Tuesday, and our plan is to solidify everything, notify the public by the end of this week. And I'm also going to send a note to Deb from the Plimpton Halifax Express so that something can be printed there just to alert everybody that the transfer station, what hours they're going to be open, since we're increasing that for everybody. So I think that that'll be looked favorably upon by a lot of residents. I know some people have been hanging on to their recyclables, which is actually a good thing. That's been helpful for us because we pay for, for all that tonnage, and waste management has had to come numerous times to switch out those trash receptacles. So it has saved us some money that people haven't just been totally emptying everything out. So we're appreciative of that, that people were respectful of us and our situation. But I think at this point, we just need to get that service resumed for our residents so that people can get rid of anything that they have on hand. So we're working at that, and we'll set up a meeting likely for next week. It seemed like Tuesday night was the most popular night, but I haven't had a chance to go through all the responses. If we do our meeting Tuesday night, and we have the moderator, town clerk, some of our emergency management team, we just want to talk through how town meeting will look and some of those efforts that will need to be made. And then separate and aside from that, our emergency management team will coordinate with the town clerk on the election for June 20. But we're trying to kind of, one thing at a time. So town meeting is sort of the first thing that we need to figure out. And that's pretty much it. We'll go from there. No change. Right now, we have two confirmed cases in town and two presumptive positive, and I have not received any updates in either direction on that, like, either that any of those have been cleared. But I also likewise haven't received word that there are any new cases. So it looks like we're still at four, and that number's holding for right now.
Thank you, Liz. All right, so John, do you have anything from the school for COVID-19?
Yes, we're going to be looking at our budget again.
Hey, back to COVID, or sorry, John, I didn't mean.
And just, and just the other piece of that, I mean, it, it's just, we're just going to have to see where this takes us, and hopefully, some of the other funds will be available to offset. But, you know, I have no belief at this point that the school will look exactly as it does in August when we, when we go back, as it does today. So I'm not sure what that's going to mean, or what the requirements are going to be, or what the state is going to set up for how all of this looks. But that's, I'm sure it means it's going to cost some money. So my hope is, is that there'll be funds there that we can, you know, we can get reimbursement for, for whatever we're going to be required to do, or how we're going to be able to make things work, you know, for the next, for the next school year, I think. It's probably about the timing, right? So, well, you know, we're, we're, we're all on the wagon. Calvin and Hobbs have kicked it off, and we're all riding along, and we'll just, we got to at the end.
Thank you, John. All right, Mark, you wanted to say something about COVID?
Yeah, I just, with the opening, since there's so much chatter on Plimpton Helping Plimpton, once we know that June 1st is maybe opening with limited fashion and transfer station dates, I wonder if we shouldn't get that out there, because this.
Oh, yeah, that's the plan. We'll post it on Facebook, and then people can share it, right, to Plimpton Helping Plimpton. I did put an update on there today on the town Facebook, that we are working on a plan, and we will make a formal announcement by the end of the week, just so people can plan ahead and understand what's happening.
Yep.
Great, thank you. All right, Mark, you never received the minutes from 5:13, right? So.
That is correct.
Why don't we hold those till our meeting on Tuesday?
Wouldn't it make sense? We, next Tuesday, we're going to go through this all over again with the moderator, et cetera. Should we have a meeting intervene, an intervening meeting, maybe the end of this week, just to talk about, not the budget at all, and not about COVID-19, but all the other stuff we got?
I don't know. They still haven't released guidance yet about, like, putting things on that aren't really, like, pressing our COVID-19. I don't know what we would have, really.
Well, one thing we got to do is a discussion around what we do with the minutes. And I don't feel like.
Oh, yeah.
Long time on that tonight.
I just, I think that the, Bree was going to coordinate with the town clerk and get them on the website, and we'll get them on Facebook. I don't think it's anything that's.
Well, John wants them on Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
So he can share them there.
Yeah, I can share them there, as long as they go up. What I don't want to wait for is for the town clerk to do it, because they haven't even got last year's on.
Can we get the minutes up? Does Bree have the ability to get them up on the website?
Well, Liz has been doing it.
I can only post to her and send them, and then she has to actually post them on to her site.
Bree, can you?
If they get shared over to Plimpton Helping Plimpton, and people start commenting, is that going to open up, or is it just going to be the link to go onto our town website?
I was going to link the minutes to.
Okay.
Facebook, but.
Like what you used to do, like the.
The town clerk.
Your announcement.
Can you send the town clerk something and just remind her that part of the Governor's order for relaxation of the open meeting law is that these minutes are supposed to be available to people in a timely manner, and to.
Yeah, I have to send her a bunch of, so part of that is on me, because they haven't been there, so they haven't been sent over. And I'm.
I know you sent a bunch, though.
I can have the day in there tomorrow.
Right, you sent a bunch, though, back in December, and John reviewed it, and it didn't look like any of those made it up. So there are none on there since, like, August. So I think that there needs to be some coordination and just get those up. But I think the most important ones, not that going back to August isn't important, but I think we need to worry about the ones that we've been doing remotely. Those really need to be available on a timely. So you can send her all of the approved ones to date, put those up there ASAP as per that legislation. Then we can go back and get the other ones added.
Yeah, but what I'm advocating. Yeah, but what I'm advocating. What I'm advocating is that we not wait for the town clerk to post them. We're the ones who approve the content. So we can put them up on the, on our Facebook page, independent of the town clerk. I understand that her, when they, we give it to her, that's the official recording of the town. But as long as it, is it, as long as it's the same in both places, there's no reason we have to wait for her to post them on the town website. And I think you guys ought to think that through and see if you agree with me. But it's 20 past eight. And I've got some calls I got to make.
Why don't, um, why don't I reach out to Tricia?
Why don't I talk to her tomorrow when I'm there?
All right, why don't you talk to her and I'll talk to her and see what we can do? Because she is the keeper of the records to get these things up.
And I have a bunch to send to her, so I don't know what the loophole is or what direction or like.
Just send her, Bree, just send her all the approved minutes to date from the start of COVID. So anything from around the March 16th timeframe up until now, any approved ones you have, send to her tomorrow.
Okay, when is our next meeting?
Tuesday, it looks like, the 26th.
The 26th. So John, John just asked for another meeting. Are we going to do that?
I don't know if it would even be posted in time. I don't know if it's necessary, honestly, but I'll defer to the board. If you want another meeting, we can.
Why don't we wait and see about when Bree talks to Tricia, I'll talk to Tricia, see what we can do to make sure that we get all these minutes up on the, the website because that needs to be done.
And I'm happy to talk to her as well.
Okay. I, I mean, if it's a training issue.
Only goes to the town website.
Well. Why don't we put this on agenda to talk about? I'm fading.
Be able to link to the, the actual minutes via the Facebook page to.
Right.
Which is the cleanest way to do that because.
That's how I wanted to do it, but John is talking about actually putting copies of the minutes on there. And I think it's more efficient to simply put a link to the website and be like, here are all the minutes.
As long as you get them up there.
Right.
They don't get up. They don't get up. This has been almost a year. So I get a little impatient when people say that's the cleanest way to do it, and we don't do it. Nothing's happened. We've been talking about this for at least nine years.
Tricia, we'll circle back with Tricia and have her reiterate that they need to be up there.
Yeah, we'll.
And then we can link it to Facebook. And then, John, you can share the link on Plimpton Helping Plimpton, and everybody will be happy.
And we'll focus on the, the COVID minutes, getting those up right away, and then she can start putting, getting everything up. Okay.
I can get them all photocopied and I can be at the townhouse by 8 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So then I think she usually comes in about 1:00.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll give her call tomorrow too, and and Liz will reach out to her as well to get this squared away.
Thank you. And I'll have them copied for her as well.
Okay.
Because I know she's got limited staff on there.
All right, so we don't have anything else on our agenda. Does anyone have anything to share before we say goodnight?
Good night. What are, what are the overtime rules?
We're way over. That's the overtime. All right, so thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Have a wonderful Memorial Day.
Oh, Memorial Day update. A Memorial Day update very quickly. The flags will not be in until after June 1st. I only have three quarters of a box. I will be decorating the gazebo with the banners, and I will put flags, and I will mulch just the gazebo and strictly the monument. And flags will be put out on Flag Day, which is June 14th. I should have the rest of the flags for the cemeteries by then. Boy Scouts cannot do it. They are not allowed to as of yet. I don't know after today, Governor Baker's announcement today. Also, I have ordered the wreaths, and one of the scout leaders is going to put them out.
Thank you, Bree. That's unfortunate about the flags.
Yeah, they were delivered to the Plymouth Town Hall, and when they were there, the town hall was shut down, closed. So they weren't delivered and sent back. And unfortunately, Roxanne cannot, the next delivery is going to be after the first. But a lot of places are going to try to join what we have proposed, which is to do them on Flag Day.
All right. How many flags are you short?
I have to come through the box. I asked Roxanne how many there were that get put out. She was unsure. I used to get three boxes of flags, and like I said, at least two boxes I would need, full boxes.
Well, how many flags are in a box?
Let me check on that tomorrow morning, and I'll give you a call.
Yeah, let me know because maybe we can pick them up and, and get them in.
I don't think there's going to be enough. I mean, I could go around the cemetery and replace these flag is, looks kind of, you know, not too good, but.
All right, let's, let's talk tomorrow. We can circle back to this one, too.
Okay, I can call you in the morning.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, anybody else have anything? All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.